Yuba Sutter dot live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at Plumas Lake Self Storage dot com. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in person and personalized, instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings, strings for instruments, and a myriad of music and sound equipment. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe.
EH twenty-two, twenty-three slash twenty-five, EH twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-eight, and that's twenty-five through twenty-eight, and reinstatements EH twenty-one, twenty-three slash thirty-five. And then at tonight's board meeting, suspended expulsion contracts EH twenty-two, twenty-three slash twenty-nine through EH twenty-two, twenty-three slash thirty-one, and EH twenty-two, twenty-three slash thirty-four through EH twenty-two, twenty-three slash thirty-nine. And we have reinstatements EH eighteen dash nineteen slash five, EH nineteen dash twenty slash forty, EH twenty-two dash twenty-two slash oh-eight through EH twenty-one dash twenty-two slash ten, then EH twenty-one, twenty-two slash fifteen, EH twenty-one, twenty-two slash eighteen through EH twenty-one, twenty-two slash nineteen, EH twenty-one, twenty-three slash thirty-one, EH twenty-one, twenty-two slash thirty-seven, EH twenty-one, twenty-two slash forty-eight through EH twenty-one, twenty-two slash forty-seven, EH twenty-one, twenty-two slash sixty-eight, EH twenty-one, twenty-two slash seventy-three, EH twenty-one, twenty-two slash seventy-five, and EH twenty-one, twenty-two slash seventy-six through EH twenty-one dash twenty-two slash seventeen, seventy-seven. The Board confirmed the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Karen Dow as principal of Corowa and Browns Valley effective January three, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Dr. Azrani, for your confidence in me. I'm looking forward to continuing the standards of excellence at both Browns Valley Elementary and Corowa Elementary. Thank you to the Board for allowing me this tremendous opportunity. I would like to thank my Ella family, the teachers, support staff, students, and community. Ella has been my home for the past three and a half years, and it was an honor to work with and learn from all of them. I would also like to thank Principal Jennifer McAdam, whose mentorship and guidance has been instrumental in my development and growth as a leader. I feel very blessed to continue to serve this district in a new capacity. I'm excited to begin working in the Browns Valley and Hallwood communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And one last item that we covered in closed session, the Board acted unanimously to begin termination proceedings against a district certified staff member. The Board also authorized the district to place the employee into unpaid leave status. Now we have recognitions. So come down.
All right, thank you. Before we begin with the official program for tonight's recognition, can we just give the wonderful musicians under the guidance of David Arevia, our director from Marysville High School, some appreciation for the wonderful tunes they did for us tonight? Thank you very much. So tonight, we're going to begin our presentations with the California School Boards Association Golden Bell Award, which was going to be presented to the Marysville Charter Academy for the Arts under the Principal, Mr. James Lohman, and his wonderful math teachers. The award is for the math department who has showed some tremendous math achievement and some tremendous math instruction, so we would like to just honor these folks tonight. And have you pleased to come up and receive your certificates, and also to shake hands with the Board and take some pictures. Thank you. Can we give them a round of applause, please? All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations once again. We also want to recognize outstanding student achievement, leadership, and athletics performance from Marysville High School. First, I'd like to ask the Principal to come on up. Mr. Vee, come on up on behalf of your school. Congratulations. And this is for a student, and I don't believe this student is here, but David Cannavale-Cech, and for Jessica Conway. David is receiving a reward for his performance under the FFA banner, and Ms. Conway is receiving it for having received or signed a letter, pardon me, a scholarship for softball. So thank you to these two outstanding students. And please allow me to make a correction. It was Janissa Conway, not Jessica, so I apologize to Janissa. Also, as the Board knows, and the audience should know, that we recognize every month outstanding performance from both students and staff, and we also are doing that this evening. So for December, we have several students who are in attendance. We want to call them up. Camila Torres from Cedar Lane. Camila Clark from Cedar Lane. Christopher Borja from Cedar Lake. Emmanuel Morales. And Maximilian Mora. Congratulations. And we want to invite the families to come up and take a picture. Come on up and take a picture if you want to get a better camera angle. And our monthly staff awards goes to these who are in attendance. Thank you for being here. Alina Shelton from Kynock Elementary. Alicia Wiggins from Marysville High School. And Chris Bab from Kynock Elementary. Congratulations.
Okay, so tonight, we're recognizing the hard work of our Nutrition Services Department for their dedication and commitment that they demonstrate daily by preparing and serving over 10,000 meals to our students every day. Our team of eighty-three hard-working food service professionals work extremely hard to create delicious and appealing recipes, serving our students three meals a day at no cost to our parents. We prepare more meals in-house than the average school district, and we purchase local seasonal produce grown in our community, including kiwis, mandarins, and peaches. So we have eighty-three that are recognized, but those tonight, we're going to call up Danielle Tillis, Karina Galvan - Galvan. Nick Dramas. Rose Hall. Sarah Rivera Salazar. Sorry about the butcher. Sandy McQuaid. Okay, okay. And Tina Bond. And I think Nick Dramas didn't hear his name, and Karina Galvan, please come up and get your certificate. Oh, you're right here. Thank you. Sandy McQuaid's right here. Rose Hall's right here. Oh, okay. Okay, come on up.
Now we're going to move to the announcements of the election results. Trustee area number three was won by Dr. Yang. He ran uncontested. Trustee area number two, Frank Crawford, ran uncontested. Trustee area number four was contested. The registered votes were 10,758 registered, and votes cast were 6,417 votes. Turnout was 59.65 percent. Brad Butler came in with 2,339, and Seth Steeman came in with 2,754 and won the election. We welcome our new Board members. Now we move on to the annual organization meeting of the Board of Trustees. Every year at this time, the Board of Trustees reelects its leadership. So at this time, I turn the organization meeting to the Superintendent, Dr. Azrani.
Thank you. This is a process for nomination of officers. I'm just going to read this out so that we understand the process. There is not a second to nominate a person to stand for election. So we need to just nominate a person is all we need to do. So there won't be a second. So can I have a nomination for Board President, please?
I'd like to nominate Randy Davis, please.
Do I hear a second? Can I have a vote from everybody on this? I mean, so everybody, please vote all in favor. I need to have a head count by name. It's by name. So, Mr. Steeman? Dr. Yang? Mr. Duckrittel? Ms. Allison Hasty?
Yes.
Mr. Frank Crawford. Okay, it's a full vote for Mr. Davis. Now we need to... Will you preside over the Vice President?
So thank you, Board, for your confidence. We move on to the election of the Vice President. Do I hear a nomination?
Nominate Doug Cridle?
I accept.
Thank you.
Doug Cridle?
Okay.
Sorry. So Doug Cridle has accepted the nomination. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Doug. You and Ms. Hasty have the shift.
Right now?
Yes. Thank you. Now we have the election of the clerk. Do I hear a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Allison Hasty.
Allison Hasty has been nominated. Do you accept?
Yes.
Allison Hasty accepts. Do I hear... All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Allison Hasty is clerk. Thank you very much. Now we have, we're at seventeen... Seven point one, appoint the superintendent as Secretary of the Board of Trustees. Do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Yang. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Azrani is our Secretary of the Board. authorize the superintendent and designate to sign warrants, contracts, and other documents. Do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Doug Cridle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh.
Seven point five.
I still do that. Sorry about that. No matter how well they prepare this, the pages two stick together. Anyway, we are at seventeen point five, election of the trustee representative to the Special Education Council. Do I hear a nominee? I nominate Frank Crawford. Does Frank Crawford...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. That'd be great.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Now, seventeen point six, set the time and date and place of the regular meetings. We've had those proposed dates for at least a couple of meetings. Are there any objections to any of those dates that have been proposed by the staff?
I don't have any objections to the schedule for the one meeting per month, but I have two questions regarding having only one meeting. So number one is, will Tuesdays be the day for a special meeting?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hasty. That was really well asked. I think for consistency purposes, every special meeting, if we should choose to have any, should always be on Tuesdays.
My second question, I'm really glad that we can honor the time and streamline the time, but will anybody be left out of an opportunity, such as honor band students, or Academica students, or FFA students being able to go on a trip? Will there be some way to have a provisional approval so that nobody misses out when they've worked really hard and they're not going to miss out on an opportunity?
Absolutely, because field trips and serving our students is why we are here. It just allows us to make sure the principals submit in advance all the ones that they know are going to happen in the course of the year, but for additional field trips like FFA, you know, immediate, we will just do provisional approvals, and then we will ratify them in the next meeting.
Thank you.
We'll make sure it does not impact with student activities at all.
I have an additional question. That was, so same thing. I'm also curious. FFA does most of our field trips right now as a group, and sometimes those dates get canceled, and they have to move those dates, and that may possibly interfere with the month-to-month meeting. Is there something in place, or do we have a provisional thing in place? Maybe you could explain that so that they're not out. Thank you.
Yes, and so thank you for that question again. We will, the way it's done in districts with one board meeting, all field trips that we know are annual meetings are already pre-arranged and given to the superintendent's office, and it comes to the Board in advance. For those that come up between board meetings, we approve them conditionally. It's like a provisional approval, and then the Board ratifies that at the next board meeting. So at no time, our students stop from going to board meetings, and that usually happens for competitions like sports, CIF. You make it to the second round, you make it to the third round, and it's happening within a day. And so absolutely, we'll make sure that those are never left out. We, however, will work closely with principals to make sure that they let us know well in advance when this is happening. So one of the reasons is that we don't want to use this provisional ratification as an excuse not to pre-plan in advance. So anything we can pre-plan, because of parent permission slips, students' health issues, transportation arrangements, should not be left for last minute. So the only ones provisional should be this sudden ones in between board meetings. Does that answer your question?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Allison Hasty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As a seven oh. Now we have comments from the Board members. Seth, do you have any comments? Dr. Yang? Allison?
Yes. Welcome, members of the public. Welcome new Board members, Dr. Yang and Mr. Steeman. We all seven come from very different backgrounds. We have very different strengths, and I look forward to working together to become as effective as possible as a team to change the lives of our students and the future of our community. Also, I am delighted that Prop twenty-eight passed. I would like to underline that it is the only initiative that the Yuba County voters passed, so it is clear that our citizens want more arts and music. I am looking forward to having a workshop to explore the possibilities for putting more art and music into our schools most strategically and planning most effectively to benefit our students as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug?
None at this time.
Frank?
I would just like to thank the great kids from Marysville High School for the gifts. As an old guy, I really love gifts. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Gary Cridle?
Just real quick, I want to welcome you guys aboard, and congratulations on getting reelected again. Good job.
Oh, thank you. Hold the applause.
Hold the applause till the end. I look forward to working with you, and all you really need to do this is just have a passion for the community, and we can make a lot of good things happen here. So, thank you.
And I'd like to also formally welcome our new Board members and our new year. We have accomplished a lot in this past year, and there's so much more to do. I'd also like to give a shout out to Bob Eckman for his help with the Lions... for his help with the Lions' sock... stocking stuffing that we gave at the... This morning. He brought a crew over and we just tried to stay out of the way to get these five hundred stockings that the Linda Lions Club put together for the TK and Kaye schools out in Olivehurst and Linda. So really appreciate that help. Now we have comments from the school site representatives. Lynn Hurst?
Good afternoon, board members, Superintendent Dr. Azroni Fall, and everyone here tonight. My name is Norberto Montero, and I'm the student board representative for Lynn Hurst High School. It has been a while since I've last been up here, but I come to you guys with a lot of information on what our clubs have been up to. So let's get started. I want to start off with our amazing sports medicine club, who have been working hard, going around asking for donations for their holiday dinners fundraiser, which gives our struggling students at Lynn Hurst a whole holiday meal that's worth fifty dollars for their family for this upcoming holiday season. They have fundraised enough money to provide forty-seven students and their families a holiday dinner this year. Next on the list is the Lynn Hurst Mock Trial Club, who have been working hard to prepare for the Sacramento County competition this January. This week, they scrimmaged a Southern California school, Trinity Pacific, via Zoom to prepare for this competition. Students gave opening and closing statements, portrayed witnesses, delivered direct and cross-examinations, and gave pre-trial arguments. Students are working hard to fundraise the amount needed to attend this competition and cover expenses such as transportation. Next on the list is our wonderful Lynn Hurst Music Department that has had an awesome few weeks of performances. Over the last two weeks, the Blazer Band has performed for the students at Edgewater, Oliver's, Johnson Park, and our Bogah Elementary Schools. This week, they will be at Linda and Ella. In addition, they had a successful winter concert in Potluck and had a full audience in the LHS cafeteria. Thank you to board member Ms. Hasty for coming to our performance at Johnson Park. We hope you all have a happy holiday from the LHS Music Department. I'm sure most of you have noticed, but it has become very chilly now, which is why our junior and freshman class are both holding a Hot Cocoa fundraiser this week at the stage and after school. Our OH Club is currently selling their Flowers of the Month and Plant of the Month. As for ROTC, they are getting ready to perform at our rally this Friday along with dance performances from our two dance clubs, Arsenal Five and Kaye Entertainment. Last but not least is our outstanding ASB and Leadership Club, who have been incredibly busy getting preparations ready for our rally this Friday. They have also started giving out incentives to students who have purchased an ASB sticker. Today was the start of our dress-up week, and today was Bring Anything But a Backpack Day. They will also start game days during lunch on Fridays, where leadership will set up many life-size games for our Lynn Hurst students to have fun. Leadership, along with our Interact Club, Mock Trial Club, and FFA Club, will be volunteering to help the So You Can organization this upcoming Saturday to help get back to our community. And with that information, I would like to thank you all for your time.
Marysville High School? Please say your name.
Good evening, everybody. I am Maya Splino, and I serve as the ASB Vice President for Marysville High School. I'm here today to update you all on the exciting events happening here at MHS. So to catch up from the last couple of weeks, we started November off with our tri-annual blood drive, where we had forty students donate blood. Then we had FFA Degree Week and Battle Week, where FFA members with their Greenhand degree were recognized. And our battle rally also concluded Battle Week, which was a great success. Our annual food drive was put on by ASB leadership last month, and we had a care package drive put on by the MHS Business Club. I would also like to announce some special recognitions for our November Students of the Month. So they would be Faith Sennett, Giselle Sanchez, Dewan Ciders, Colby Rowe, Davian Santiago, and Rodriguez Shratalua. Now, going into December, we had our Adopt a Family fundraiser and Coco and Karama Link Crew in order to provide presents for homeless children in the community and prepare freshmen for their first year of finals. Also, going into the last week of the semester, MHS was excited to have the Yuba County Office of Education here yesterday at lunch to help students de-stress before finals. Students from Student Council handed out self-care bags, and we had a raffle where one of our students won a new pair of Beats headphones. Also, one of our attendance office secretaries, Ms. Maramar, was voted to be our December Staff of the Month by Student Council. Now, for some sports updates for the rest of the semester, boys' basketball has games tomorrow versus Lincoln, a tournament in Rockland on Thursday, and a game versus East Nicholas on Friday. Boys soccer also has a game on Thursday against Bear River, and girls' junior varsity basketball also has a tournament in Sutter. Girls soccer has a varsity game tonight in Colfax and will also be playing Thursday against Bear River. Also, a new update that I received while in this meeting, last night, our boys' basketball team won their game last night, so... Now, finally, there is also a wrestling match scheduled for this Thursday against Las Plumas. And to wrap up the semester, we have finals this week, starting tomorrow through Friday. Students will get out early at twelve fifty, and buses will run normal time Wednesday and Thursday, picking up students at three oh five. Due to students having to wait, our student body has scheduled movies in the South Auditorium, and the field house will be open until school buses arrive on campus. Now, I would also like to welcome Dr. Wang and Mr. Steeman for joining the board. And that is it. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you have a wonderful winter holiday.
Thank you. MCAA? Please state your name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hope Cross. I'm the representative for MCAA. MCAA has had a busy month filled with dances, musical performances, and holiday festivities. The MCAA dancers did an amazing job on December second and third when they performed for their annual winter dance recital. Most of the performances were student-choreographed and directed. On December third, the MCAA marching band took first place again in the Christmas parade. We now have almost a decade streak. Last week on Monday, the first group of piano students performed solos and duets. On Tuesday, the orchestra, band, and drum line gave impressive and entertaining show. Thank you.
Thank you.
On Wednesday, choir, songwriting, and the second group of piano students played. Finally, on Thursday, all levels of guitar performed. It is incredible to see such a talented group of students all conjoined in a community that truly values the arts. The variety of performances offered leaves no student left out. This week, we are celebrating the holidays and spreading positivity. We ran a booth yesterday at lunch for students to write encouraging notes. Today is Ugly Sweater Day. Tomorrow is Dress Up as a Gift Day. Thursday is Holiday Hat Day, and Friday is Pyjama Day. And with that, I wish you all a wonderful winter break.
South Lynn Hurst? Or North Lynn Hurst? Opportunity for employee organizations to address the board. Marysville Unified Teachers Association.
Good evening, Mr. Davis and the rest of the board. I'd like to also join the ranks of people who have been welcoming our new board members for this evening. One of the things that I want to spend most of my time doing this evening is thanking all of the Miuta members for all of their hard work this year as we're finishing off a calendar year and we're about to hit winter break. But I would also like to thank everyone throughout our entire communities, all of our students and our parents, our businesses, all of our staff members from every school site up to the district office, everyone who has dedicated so much time, energy, and effort to the various activities undertaken at this time of year, from the various music performances, to our food drives, to Adopt a Family, to the myriad of student activities and student performances that have gone on. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that your efforts and your time and energy, your spirit, are all noticed and greatly appreciated, actually more than just mere words. Also, I know that the first read of the Educator Effectiveness Grant is back on the agenda this evening, and so I just want to let you know that there are still some significant issues there. We do appreciate the time that we have spent in speaking with Amy Stratton and with Jay Traheyo. There are still some issues there, some kinks to work out. I will, instead of spending a lot of time this evening on them, especially considering I'm not quite sure exactly how much voice I may have this evening, I will be emailing the board a lot of that information, especially since there are a lot of numbers and stuff that are involved and what I wanted to get across this evening. But one of the issues that I do want you to kind of take away from, or one of the points I want you to take away from this evening in that first read is the fact that where Miuta has, I guess you would say our biggest issue is the fact that the vast majority of the funds now, and I do mean the vast majority of the funds, probably about ninety percent of the funds, are now going to a very small percentage of the educators in the district. And so the Educator Effectiveness Grant is meant to be more, I guess you would say, across the board and helping more of the teachers throughout that. Not saying that necessarily every single individual teacher, but when you get down to a very small percentage, ten percent of the teachers being directly impacted by those grant funds, I think that's something that we need to address and look at. I also want to give a personal thank you while I am here this evening to Jennifer Pasalia and Doug Trower. They both came over and visited my two senior classes at the high school about a project that was discussed right here at the board. And so I wanted to thank both of them for giving their time and coming over. My students both said they really appreciated it, both my classes. They said it was amazing to actually have somebody come in, but they actually also felt like they were heard. And so that's a big thing, especially with students and especially with high school students. So I appreciate both of you for giving your time and your energy for that. I also wanted to give just a brief little update on the LMI, the Labor Management Initiative. We had another LMI meeting, and we are making some progress. We now have five focus areas and some initial actions for those focus areas, things that we believe we can accomplish in the next one to four months. So that was a very productive meeting. And additionally, I want to finish the evening off much in the same vein and spirit of our student representatives. I want to wish everybody a very safe holiday season and also a very happy holiday season, and enjoy the winter break and the rest of relaxation. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Operating Engineers Local Union Number Three. California School Employees Associations Number Three Twenty-Six and Six Forty-Eight. Association of Management and Confidential Employees. Supervisory Unit. Now we're going to move to our presentations. Linda Elementary School Site Plan?
Good evening, President Davis, Board Trustees, members of the district cabinet, members of the audience. Principal Zach Schultz, Linda Elementary School. I appreciate the opportunity to provide you with this presentation that shares a little bit about our progress towards this year's site plan goals.
Good evening, President Davis, Board of Trustees, Dr. Azroni, Executive Cabinet, and members of the audience. This is Principal Zach Schultz here, representing the proud Lions of Linda Elementary School. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to speak about the progress we are making in realizing the goals in this year's site plan. Our school plan for student achievement acts as a kind of roadmap for our decision-making. We use it to ensure that money spent is aligned to one or more of our five school-wide goals. We're quite large for an elementary school. We have over six hundred students with a wide range of grade levels from TK through sixth grade. Over a quarter of our student population are considered English language learners, and more than eighty percent of our population are considered socio-economically disadvantaged. One of our school's mottos is, "When you miss school, you miss out." This tagline is recited every day after the Pledge of Allegiance at the end of our morning announcements. This year, our Assistant Principal Lori Whitmore has started a positive incentive program in which students earn brag tags every month for maintaining good attendance. To address the increase in suspensions, our staff is receiving professional development on responding to crisis-level behavior from District Behavior Analyst Elena Morris and our Special Day Class Teacher Letty Collier. By the time you view this presentation, our staff will have received training from Elena and Letty during the staff workday on October twenty-fourth and a follow-up session during our staff meeting on October twenty-sixth. Additionally, I will be attending a two-day training on restorative practices on November tenth and eleventh. Compared to the last school year in which students took the Smarter Balance State Test, we saw a combination of slight increases and slight decreases in academic achievement at every grade level in both ELA and math. We are aiming to see a ten percent increase for each grade level in both assessments for next spring's state testing. To facilitate this increase, we are reviewing effective, research-informed instructional practices. For example, during the October twenty-fourth staff workday, our professional development included topics such as John Hattie's Research in Visible Learning, our district priority standards, and the importance of communicating clear learning targets in student-friendly language. We referenced a variety of resources when assessing our needs. Data from the sources displayed in this grid represents some, but not all, of the information analyzed to develop Linda Elementary School's site plan. Our five school goals mirror our district's LCAP goals. Our first goal pertains to increasing academic achievement for all students. Many of the strategies employed to achieve Goal One include staffing. New for this year, we have increased our PE teacher from half-time to full-time, and this has resulted in the creation of common planning periods for general education teachers of the same grade level. We are also contracting with a retired teacher who now serves as an instructional coach and reading intervention specialist in Placer County. With Goal Number Two, we are striving to make Linda Elementary a safe, positive, and productive environment that is conducive to learning for all. New for this year is the addition of a PBIS SEL Paraeducator, who works with students to learn social-emotional skills and strategies to help them self-regulate emotions so that they can get to a state of mind that permits them to learn. This specialist also runs our Lion Bucks store. Visit our school any Friday, and you will see that almost all the students and staff are showing their lion pride and wearing their blue-and-white spirit gear. Every student received a lion pride t-shirt at the beginning of the school year. Through professional development opportunities, our staff are gaining skills and knowledge to incorporate appropriate levels of rigor and relevance into their instruction and increasing opportunities for our students to engage in the Four Seas to Twenty-First Century Skills. A quarter of our students are English learners, and it is important that we work to meet their needs. Built into our master schedule is a thirty-minute block of designated ELD instruction for each grade level. Several of our teachers have been trained in Guided Language Acquisition Design, or GLAD, which is a set of effective and research-informed instructional strategies that support English language acquisition. Four of our teachers and I are participating in a training through SCOE, known as the English Learner Roadmap Implementation for Systematic Excellence, or just ELRYS for short. Learner Roadmap Implementation for Systematic Excellence, or just ELRIS for short. We are constantly seeking ways to build connections with our families and facilitate both one-way and two-way communications in a variety of ways. Last year, we started holding evening events again, such as Family Dinner Night and Open House. These events have so far been well-attended and are proving to be one of the best ways to connect with our families. By the time you have viewed and heard this presentation, we will have held our Fall Festival on October 28th. This is an event that staff and parents have been planning and preparing for several weeks Our budget for the current school year includes the funding sources shown here. Our Title I and targeted funds are used to meet our site plan and LCAP goals. Our School Site Council is met in September and October, and based on the dialogue held at both meetings, we have already made adjustments to the plan that have resulted in better use of funds to meet student needs. At the time of this presentation's recording, it is late October. School has only been in session for a little less than two and a half months. However, we've had so many events, experiences, projects, and initiatives happen that the first day of school seems like a long time ago. We still have much to accomplish this year, but are excited for the work we have ahead of us and are optimistic that our efforts will result in increased achievement for all students. Again, many thanks for this opportunity for you to share. I am happy to answer any questions you may have, or feel free to reach out if you think of anything you'd like to ask or discuss in the future.
Thank you, sir. You're doing a fabulous job there.
I appreciate it, sir.
Zach, how long have you been with us?
Thirteen months.
Yeah, you're putting up some good numbers. It shows that your leadership is, something's working there, right? So, nice job.
I appreciate it.
You know, that EL roadmap is a good program, and I think after you guys and you and your crew get through that, you're going to be able to increase those ELD numbers, so.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Schultz? Thank you very much. Now we have Kynock Elementary.
Good evening, Dr. Osrani, President Davis, newest members of the board. Can I call the old guard? Is that what we would call you? Okay. Members of the cabinet and members of the audience. My name is Derek Morrison, and I'm the principal at Kynock Elementary. And at the time of this recording, my vice principal had resigned, so you get my counterpart in this presentation, so I hope you enjoy the presentation.
Good evening, Board Trustees, Dr. Osrani, Members of the Cabinet, and those who are attending in the audience. Welcome to Kynock Elementary's Board Presentation for the 2022-2023 School Year. Tonight's Board Presentation is hosted by Mr. Morrison, Site Principal, and his sidekick, As one unified district and one united front, Kynock's plan sounds very familiar to the presentations that you have heard before. In the next few moments, we would like to share what makes us unique to the district and share with you some of the celebrations and areas of focus. Being aware of what our students and families need from a school has been our focus. Based on the results of multiple surveys as well as a variety of data points, we strive to tailor our program to meet the needs of every student who pass through the doors of our site. Our focus areas have been school culture and climate, academic offerings and support, behavior and discipline, parent involvement, and teacher support. Currently, our school site enrollment is the fourth-largest in the district with 714 TK through fifth-grade students attending. Some of the exciting data that we have to share is that, number one, we reclassified 13 EL students this year. Our daily attendance averages are on the rise. Our alternatives to suspension are paying off with a significant reduction in the amount of students suspended from school. Our CASP data speaks for itself. Normally, a person would look at these graphs and be depressed, but we seek to find the positive. Looking at the number of students who met or exceeded the standards, all of our grade levels showed growth in each subject area. Our goal for this year is to continue that climb and see less blue and red on those graphs and more green and yellow. MJUSD has adopted five LCAP goals, which are reflected in our site plan. Goal Three, that focuses on college and career readiness, is not written into Kynock's site plan yet, but we will work with sites within the district to discover ways that we can incorporate them here, too. LCAP Goal One focuses on improving academic performance, engaging various identified means of all Kynock students. We have allotted funds that can help us do that by providing PD for staff, updating technology, a full-time LRT, online subscriptions, materials to supplement the curriculum, continue to supply our book vending machines, strong team of paras to help mitigate learning gaps in our youngest grades. As Mr. Morrison mentioned already, our para team is more focused this year and is working with our youngest learners to mitigate the learning gaps when they're not subbing in classrooms. Our students love the book vending machines and hard-to-earn trips to them. Upgrades to classroom technology is almost complete. Hopefully, by the end of winter break, all classrooms will have new laser projectors installed. Alfred, can you get on that? Data will continue to be what drives us, and we will work with Dr. Trejo and his team to sharpen our skills when it comes to that area. School culture and climate are the focus here at Kynock, as well as physically safe campus. LCAP Goal Two focuses on these aspects. LCAP Goal Number Four focuses on diverse community of learners. In Goal Four, we aim to meet our students where they are and help them along the journey to becoming the leaders of tomorrow. Our path leading us there includes commitments to multi-tiered systems of supports, strengthening our EL strategies used in the classroom, and providing support for our classroom teachers through our EL facilitator. There are so many things to celebrate in Goal Four, like 13 EL students reclassified this year. That's the largest number that Kynock has had in recent years. Kudos to our students and to our team. Our PBIS team meets monthly to find ways to improve the experience that our students have here on a daily basis. Data collected from teachers and staff will guide this discussion and planning. And our students work really hard in the classroom and around campus to be recognized on the Morrison Minute, which can be found on our website under the Parents tab. Without the support of the community and the educational partners, we cannot do what we do. We have made it a priority to reach out and connect with them on a regular basis. We strive to do this by maintaining positive interactions with families and educational partners, keep families in the know by providing the paw print on a monthly basis, as well as the Sunday summary every Sunday afternoon, using surveys at the end of every trimester to provide a checkup on how we are doing as a school. Some of the ways that we connect with families are, parents can connect with the admin team through the "I need to see the principal" tab on the website. Monthly events that connect school to home is something we have been wanting to do and are proud to say we're finally taking it on this year. We will continue to be available to listen to what the parents desire in their children's school experience. Opportunities like Questions and Answers with Admin will allow parents and community members to have a voice on our campus. Well, how do we do all of this? Well, it takes money, and here's how the allocations have been dispersed at our site. Our total budget is $683,060. In Title I, $304,975 plus $2,620 have been allotted for that. Targeted, $204,782. Our lottery monies, $161,355.17. LCAP, $1,028. LCAP Music, $2,500. And LCAP Science, $5,800. We want to thank you for your time and commitment to our students. As always, there's an open invitation to come and see the good things that are happening here at Kynock Elementary. If you have any questions or comments, I would be happy to respond to them now. Have a great rest of your day, and go Cubs.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? Well, you're doing a fantastic job there, and it was wonderful to see the success you're having with your discipline.
Thank you.
That's an enormous achievement, and we really appreciate everything you and your staff are doing.
Thank you very much. I will relay that to the staff. Thank you.
I hear you're having a good time.
We're having fun.
Now we have Oliverhurst's Stonentree with Santa Claus.
I didn't know I was supposed to bring Batman or things like that, so I could probably do a Yogi the Bear, like, "Hey, no boo-boo! Let's get some of picnic baskets, eh?" Besides that, that's about as good as I can do, other than "Ho, ho, ho! Merry Christmas!" Because I do get to play Santa. But this is my last three days at Oliverhurst as the principal. Most, some of you may know, and some of you may not know, as being new. Our new principal, Heather Marshall. So I'm going to give her a quick chance to say hello to the board, too, just to get a chance.
Hi, good evening, Board, Superintendent Osrani, Cabinet, Members of the public that are left here. I don't do any voices. Apologies in advance, but I am really happy to be here and excited to move over to Oliverhurst. So, thank you.
So you will be happy to know that my whole presentation does stay under eight minutes. I did follow the directions under like, not like some of my colleagues, so it's seven minutes and 46 seconds, exact, and so I made sure to do that. So you'll be happy to know that part about it. And then afterwards, I'll ask, be here to answer any of your questions, I think. And I get, I want to thank all of you for, that are here this evening. Thank you, Board, for the opportunities that you have presented and allowed me even for the last three and a half years here at Oliverhurst, my nine years at Ella's the principal and seven years at Cedar Lane. So I'm excited to move on and do some new things, but this is a great time, and you picked a great person. I'm very excited for Oliverhurst, and Heather's a great nominee for that, so here we go.
And welcome to the Oliverhurst Elementary Board Presentation, where all Oliverhurst Eagles soar in a positive, safe, and supportive community. Fly high. I'm Rob Greger, the principal. Heather Marshall will be the principal, starting as of this coming Friday. Our Assistant Principal is John Green. I want to thank Dr. Faasr Osrani, Dr. Trejo, and Dr. Simon for this opportunity to present before you, the board. I also want to welcome Chong Yang and Seth Steeman to the group. Thank you, and we look forward to serving with you. This is our opportunity to tell about all the great things that Oliverhurst Elementary is doing as a site. We are continuing to grow, and that is happening through our purpose and our site plan. Oliverhurst has developed a school plan for student achievement. We call that a SIPSA. It meets the essential guidelines for every student succeeds at. What we do is we make sure all children have an opportunity to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education. We work close with education achievement gaps. We're trying to help our students with disability, low-income students, and students that are coming from minority situations and EL. Oliverhurst Elementary, we engage in a timely and meaningful consultation with our stakeholders, and we make sure that all of them are a part of this as we develop our SIPSA. The plan is developed in with the Marysville Joint Unified School District's LCAP, which is the Local Control and Accountability Plan. Our school has 475 students enrolled as of today. We are currently full in our TK, our third, our fifth, and and 34 of our English learners. As of last year, we had an 89.8% attendance rate, 2.7%. Our Oliverhurst Eagles, we continue to use interventions and lose suspension. At this point, we've had one student who's been formally disciplined, and that person has had that twice. Our state and local student achievement is called our CASP, and that is from our last year's test scores. And you can see that in third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, the scores are 20% in ELA, 23% math, 18% ELA, 15% math, 29% in ELA for fifth, and 10% math, and in sixth grade, 17%, and then 12% for math. The two little charts off to the right here, they show our overall growth for the last several years, and you can see what we've done in third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. Obviously, there are no scores there during the COVID time. We did make improvement from last year by more than 5%, and we continue to move towards that for the following school year. We do a comprehensive needs assessment, and basically what we're doing is we take all the data that we have and we put it into our SIPSA, and we try to find ways to provide interventions and get our students at grade level is the goal. Right now, we have, majority of our kids are not at grade level, so we are working towards bringing them to grade level. And we do that by using the CASP and looking at how our students did in ELA math and then fifth-grade science data. We look at students' LPAC scores, how our reclassification is working. Our chronic absenteeism is a part of that in our suspension, and as we look through all that, we try to find ways to bring intervention through our positive behavior intervention and support, which is PBIS. In addition to that, we have an ASB. We've talked with our ELAC, our Site Council, and then obviously, our most important goal members, which is our staff. And we try to get everybody together, and then we take our district allotted funds and the state allotted funds federally, too, and we put those together to be able to provide interventions such as tutoring, making sure we have professional development, support in our EL, and other areas to make sure we get that home connection. Our goals are simple. LCAP Goal One is to improve academic performance by recreating an academic system that addresses and engages the various identified needs of all Oliverhurst Elementary students. We use supplemental hours for PLC time. We get focused on high-quality instruction, and we try to target essential grade-level standards in EL math and also ELD. We provide ongoing PD for staff. We have a technology lead, and then we have some supplementals that we put into place to help out get materials and technology into the classrooms. We provide books for the library, and then we also have some contracts and service agreements. The second goal is to create an environment that addresses the physical and emotional and safety needs of all students. We use supplemental materials related to social-emotional learning in the grades TK through six to promote social skills, mindfulness, resilience, and critical thinking. We do our PBIS school-wide, and we also have a school counselor and some ORCs that continue to help and work towards that. Goal Three is we prepare every student with the skills needed for college and career readiness. We have a technologies needed for a 21st century classroom, and we continue to try to upgrade all of our technology. We've had cultural and career days, spirit days, and we target the activities focused on these cultural, college, and career mindset, and we try to have student leadership also. In our Goal Number Four, we work on build a system of specific support for our EL learners. What we do is we make sure we have EL para professionals that work directly in the classrooms with the teacher to provide interventions. We also provide supplemental curriculum if needed for the ELD instruction, and then we make sure on our master schedule that we have 30 minutes of designated ELD time every day for our students. We continue on with our LCAP Five, which is our home and school partnerships. We have back-to-school night, meet-and-greet, parent-teacher conferences, behavior celebrations, which is our golden tickets, Title I meetings, which we do with our ELAC, a monthly newsletter that goes out to parents. We also have a site weekly newsletter that we do called Eagle Excellence. We have a Read Across America Day, field trips, and cultural days that we do to get our parents involved. Our budget total with carryover is $571,058, and you can see our funding's reflected in the site plan. We have Title I, we had $135,000 plus carryover, targeted $147,000 plus carryover, and lottery $93,000. and forty-seven plus carryover, and Lottery ninety-three plus a thousand plus another hundred and thirteen carryover. You see, we also get a little bit of LCAP and music and parent involvement to go along with that. Here at Oliver's, we always are trying to celebrate all the great things that are doing at our site, and we want to continue to fly high, and all of our Oliver's Eagles are trying to continue to build a positive, safe, and supportive community. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I want to thank the board members and our cabinet for allowing us, the Oliver's Eagles, to continue to fly high and supporting us in every way that you do. We want to thank our new principal that's coming in, and Heather Marshall, and we're looking forward to all the great things that she's going to bring to our site, starting here in January. So again, I want to thank all the board members. Again, thank you for allowing us to serve you and obviously, serve our students and our family of Oliver's Elementary. Again, thank you to our new board members, Chong and Seth. Welcome to the Marysville family, and we look forward to the years to come and all the great things that we're going to continue to do here at Oliver's Elementary.
Thank you very much.
I didn't know I had that many S's in my slurring there, the sound. I felt like Sally was going to sell seashells at the seashore.
The hope we have is that you've set the stage, and the incoming principal will take the baton and raise that flag even higher. So we really, really appreciate everything you've done there and at Ella. Are there any other questions for the, from our Santa Claus?
I agree. Thank you for all that you've done. Appreciate it, and I think we're in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
I'd just like to do a quick comment for our new board trustees. One of the things that we have been doing since last year, and more consistently this year, is all the school plans are pre-taped and presented. Not only are they presented here for the audience, but they're also posted tomorrow morning on the school's website. And the reason is for transparency and ongoing education of the community. The question has often come to me, why can't the people present here? Yes, they can present, but when a person wants to see the presentation, then it doesn't look as professional as a pre-taped, which is the facts absolutely clear. And you'll see more of that work when the district starts presenting the LCAP and other programs as well. So thank you for your patience with these presentations.
Now, we have technology.
Thank you very much. My presentation will speak for itself, and then I will be available for any questions. So thank you.
Hello, Board members, Dr. Osirani, fellow Cabinet members, and the MJUSD community. My name is Brian Williams, and I am the Chief Technology Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to present to you tonight an update on the MJUSD Technology Department and to go over the department goals for the 2022-2023 school year. To start, I would like to acknowledge my staff in the Technology Department. I have long said that I have the best staff, and that continues to be true today. We may not have as many people as other districts do in their technology departments, but I will put the service level that my staff provides up against anyone. They make my job easier each and every day. I would also like to thank the 22-23 Technology Advisory Committee, or TAC. We had our first meeting last month, and I was very pleased with the discussion and knowledge available in the room. This group is going to be invaluable in helping to determine the direction of technology within the district moving forward. I know that we have a couple of new board members with us tonight, so I thought I would take a moment to go over the different areas that the Technology Department supports. While cybersecurity is a focus throughout all of K-12 right now, we still need to make sure that our teachers and our staff are able to perform their jobs at the highest level, and we work hard to stay ahead of the ever-changing technology landscape. Now, moving into the department goals for the 22-23 year. I was fortunate enough to be part of the Strategic Plan Committee last year. We worked hard to collect input from all of the educational partners of the district, and in doing so, we were able to put together a three-year strategic plan for the district. That plan identified five goals. As you can see, the word "technology" does not appear in them at all. However, one of the things I love most about my job is that the Technology Department has the opportunity to directly serve and support every single person in the district, whether it be students, parents, or staff. So while you may not see the word "technology" in these goals, the Technology Department will play a supporting role in each and every one of them. And in doing so, I have identified three primary goals for the 22-23 school year. Goal number one lines up with the Strategic Plan Goal Four, Action Item Two, and it is enhance community input opportunities for expanded technology infrastructure. This goal comes with two action items. The first action item focuses on cybersecurity training for students and staff. We are looking into online video trainings, a cybersecurity newsletter, and other ways to reach the end user to make sure they are aware of potential cyber threats. We will also be working with the TAC to select a multi-factor authentication system. This will keep us in compliance for insurance purposes and also make the district safer as a whole. The second action item is similar, but goes beyond the security part of being online, and instead focuses on the way our users act online. I have said that schools have always taught students how to behave on the playground, and the internet is the new playground for our kids. It is critical that we teach them how to be safe and how to be responsible when they are online. Goal number two is aligned with Strategic Plan Goal Two, Action Item Four. Develop a technology budget process to support district-wide infrastructure for safety, teaching, and learning. The first action item for this goal is to develop a five-year projected budget for technology. As you all know, technology is not cheap, and unfortunately, it doesn't last forever. Having a replacement plan in place is crucial. This is going to become an even bigger issue for school districts in the next two to four years because of the pandemic. Our district, like many others, used COVID funds to purchase a large number of computers and Chromebooks. While that is great for now, in two years, when all of them begin to go obsolete at the same time, it will be important that we have a plan to keep everyone updated and working effectively. The second action item focuses on campus security. The current estimated cost to upgrade our intercoms, security cameras, and door buzzers is approximately five point four million dollars. As funds become available, we will work to improve our security throughout the district, as it is one of the main priorities for the district as a whole. For starters, we are currently working on a plan for this school year to move every school over to an IP intercom system. This will improve the intercom systems throughout the district, making it easier for all calls and other information to be shared at each of our campuses. The final goal for the 22-23 school year is aligned to the Strategic Plan Goal Three, Action Item One, and Goal Four, Action Item Two. The first action item is to find ways to better provide professional development to our staff, both certificated and classified. This was another focus of the TAC meeting held last month. With their support, I am confident that we can put a plan together to assist all of our staff. The second item for Goal Number Two is to work with adult education to provide technology certification courses. We are expanding this beyond just the adult ed students, though, and soon, we will be holding our first seminar for parents on social media and how kids are using the various applications. We are very excited to be able to bring these seminars to our parent community. With that, I would like to thank everyone for your time and attention, and I am available for any questions you may have. Thank you again.
Are there any questions for Brian?
I, I, thank you. That was an awesome presentation. Thank you for bringing that. I think it's unfortunate that we only think of technology when it doesn't work. So make sure that you tell your team, hey, you're doing a great job. It's when we don't hear about it is when things are working, so that's awesome. The one comment, and it's not really a comment, more of a, just a throwing a dart out there, the, the end of life on some of these devices, it's inevitable, it's going to come, and in previous experience, there are particular devices that we can't reuse, repurpose after we're done with them, and I would make the suggestion of maybe shifting our focus, looking farther out of, okay, when this particular device, once it reaches the ends of life, what do we do with it after the fact is, do we send it to the dumps, or can we repurpose it and give it to a student or someone who can keep using that, that device?
Sure. And, and I, we, we do have some limitations on that because it's government funds that we use it. We are, we actually need to go to auction to, to make those available to the public to purchase. We've looked into doing that in the past, and to be honest, the amount of money we spent in man-hours preparing the auction was more than we were getting back in the, because the devices are so old, so it's part of the reason why we haven't been, and they end up going to electronic recycling most of the time, so.
Well, I just would like to offer the tremendous work that you and your team have done, and it has been easy. And all the work you did during the COVID, I, I don't think anybody, anyone can appreciate the many, many man-hours that were put into supporting that effort. And since then, it's been to review and to upgrade our security, and you've been ahead of the crowd and looking ahead at that. So we really, really appreciate you and, and your staff for all that hard work.
Well, thank you very much. I have the best staff, I really do.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we have updates by department. Business Services, Jennifer?
Hi, yes, thank you. I just want to thank Marysville High School for these treats. I appreciate that, and I just want to wish everybody a happy holidays and a restful break.
I just want to echo what my colleague Jennifer said, and thank the high school. Thank you for the treats. I already tried it. It's fudge, and I love fudge, so. I just want to say what a humbling experience I had this week, actually, actually been the last couple of weeks, the food drive that the district office staff was conducting. We raised, as a district office, that over fifteen hundred cans that are going to be going to the local food bank and the So You Can organization. It was a friendly competition between upstairs staff and downstairs staff. You know, I'm downstairs, and we thought we had it until the last minute, and then, man, we were hammered with a whole bunch of cans. It's friendly competition, but it's for a very worthy cause, and it was humbling to be a part of, and I just want to thank everyone who was a part of it. So that's it for me, and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody.
Thank you. Personnel?
Thank you. We have submitted up to a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar application for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to commission on teacher credentialing for a teacher residency grant. So thanks to Angela, Dave Vujovic, and our grant-writing team. Hopefully, we'll find out in the next couple of weeks if we achieve that grant or not. We'll be to, to support mentors as well as student teachers to do paid residencies in our district, which will help increase the pipeline for the future for hiring new staff. We're excited about that. We also have over ten classified staff members participating in a consortium with Placer County Office of Education to obtain their bachelor's degrees or teaching credentials. So that's exciting to see them pursuing those dreams. We're also back at the table with MUDA, and appreciate the collaboration and the work we've done at LMI and with MUDA to continue to develop relationships and reach agreements. And then we are just starting the look at the calendar for next year and collaborating with Yuba County Office of Ed to do that, so more on that to come.
Thank you. Any more, Brian, from technology?
Thank you very enough for me tonight, so I will pass.
Superintendent?
Thank you, thank you. It's been a really busy month around Marysville, and as you heard, a lot of wonderful, cheery competitions and concerts that are happening across our schools, and I want to thank our teachers, I want to thank our families and our principals for the dedication and the time they give to our students, and we are here for our children. That's what we prioritize and our North Star, and so thank you for everything that everybody does to keep our kids safe. And you heard the fun that the district office is doing in raising cans for our families of students we serve as well. And a big shout-out to Marysville for the wonderful music they've showed us today, and I know Ms. Hasty has been particularly focused in making sure that I don't lose my focus on the, on music and arts in our school. So we will be back with Prop 28 Planning Committee, which is already in place. She asked a question, what we have done so far, and we've done quite a bit already, and so we'll bring that to you. I would also like to recognize, again, as you saw, the CSBA conference last week, or the week before was, was a wonderful time. Thank you, Dr. Yang, Mr. Duckriddle, Gary Riddle, and thank you, Mr. Davis, for being there with us. I think we learned a lot together, but most importantly, the, the, the shining glory was to see one of our schools walk away with the statewide mathematics award. And why it's so important is, I think as a district, we have never applied for the CSBA awards before, and as I keep saying, all of us, as we mentioned, we work so hard. Our teachers work so hard, our staff works so hard, and we have some excellent programs. So we applied for three, you're allowed to apply for three, and out of one thousand-plus school districts, we walked away with one of the three, and isn't that a wonderful achievement? And so this year, we'll be applying for another three, and I believe Mr. Trahio is already on that, so thank you, Mr. Trahio. I have the honor of working with a fabulous cabinet. I think I, I always thank our teachers and our staff, and I never, ever thank my cabinet. I think they just make me step up a little bit more to my job, make me do things a little better, think a little better every day. And while I was gone this past week, these four people here just held the fort and made sure I didn't get any uninterrupted emails and calls during this time that I was out for a family hardship. I also want to congratulate and welcome Mr. Steeman, Dr. Yang, to the, to our team, our governance team of eight, we've worked really well. We welcome you and your different thinking to challenge us, to do what we need to do to do what's best for our children again, and our teachers and our staff. Finally, also, thank you so much for appointing Karen Dow. I think she'll do an excellent job as a new principal of Cordova and Bronze Valley, and of course, the work that will be done by Heather Marshall and Oliver's is going to be instrumental in the next phase of that school. And also, thank you for supporting us with the hiring of the new Director of Wellness, as you heard today and in the presentation. So proud of Kynock and Oliver's for having the suspensions thus far to one child is unthought of. We were at CSBA, and we heard that the trauma children are facing is nationwide, and California especially, is really struggling with student behaviors. And so certain schools in our district are seeing more of it, and then we are here with the Director of Wellness to bring those resources to them. I want to wish the community a wonderful holiday season, and I think we've all come this far. It's so quick, just the other day, we started school, and now in December. When you work hard and you enjoy what you do, time just flies, doesn't it? But everybody have a safe holiday, and thank you to our Board of Trustees for your dedication and your support of the work that everybody is doing in this district. We couldn't do this without your mentorship and your guidance, so thank you.
The one thing I wanted to bring up was that MCAA won a thousand dollars with that award, and it was so interesting, Dr. Osirani and I were sitting together, and I, they had these gigantic checks, and they were sitting right behind their podium, and I, I was trying to focus, and I go, that looks like Marysville, and I'm going, what, and then next thing you know, they gave us that, that award, and so it was a total surprise. We didn't, none of us knew that was going to happen, and it was just so cool that our Golden Bell Award winner and MCA's principal were able to accept that for the district. It was, it was quite a moment. So now we move into the approval of minutes, the approval of the November eighth, 2022 regular board meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Do I hear a second? Second by Allison Hasty. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries five oh. those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries 5-0. The two new members abstain. Okay. Just so you know, why I said five instead of seven. Then we have the approval of the November 14, 2022 Special Board Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to that, those agenda, that minutes for that meeting? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Doug Kittle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain? Yeah, yeah. So we, it's approved, something like 4-0. So then we have... There were, there were, there were four.
The people at the meeting were four. It's just the minutes that are not being approved.
Okay. Thank you. Now we have the approval of the consent agenda items. Are there any items in the consent agenda that members of the board want to pull for further discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Doug Kittle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Now we move to new business. First item of new business, 19.1, approve the updated administrative regulation 5117, enter district attendance. Do we have staff?
Hello, I'm Zachary Plas. I'm the Director of Student Welfare and Attendance. And I have a short presentation just to kind of walk through some of these pieces. Our AR 5117 is really concerning our inter-district transfers. So an inter-district transfer is when a student who belongs to us because they live in our attendance zone is moving to another school district, or vice versa, if a student's coming from outside of our school district and wants to come into our school district. One of the pieces that we wanted to kind of talk about is that our district has historically lost more students than it has gained. And so one of the pieces that we wanted to present to you today is just talking about those numbers and how many students are actually leaving our district. So we can go to the next slide. Perfect. Thank you. So this is just by site. These are the percentage of students that leave and some of the numbers in terms of number of students that if they were at their home site where they would be located. Now, some of these sites for like Yuba Gardens might have left when they were in third grade. And would be, but currently right now, they're a seventh or eighth grader. So you're seeing their numbers represented in that way. Total, we have 989 students who are with, live within our school district who do not attend our schools. Go ahead to the next slide thing. Where are those students going? That's the next question. They go to most of our neighboring students. So some of the largest one you're going to see is Wheatland Elementary School District. That's the dark blue with almost 400 students. And then the Wheatland High School District has about 117. And then Plumus Lake is 111. Yuba City, we had 129 that go that direction. Generally speaking, most of these are just students we send to. Yuba City is a little bit different. They send us about, they send us approximately about the same number of students. So we kind of trade back and forth in terms of students coming and students going. And then we do have some other smaller ones. When we look at ADA lost, we talk about the average amount we get per student and then kind of multiply that. We do get a slightly different rate depending on what grade level they're in. And we'd have a more broken-out chart that I can share with staff or with board later. But what we're seeing right now is kind of the fiscal impact. Last year, it was about $8 million that we lost. This year, it'd be about $9 million. And the goal really was to try to reduce the total number of students who are leaving every year. And so that's why you see that number starting to reduce and go down. The idea was that if we kept the students who have already left and not bring them back, but just let them, the ones who are already gone, we kind of said, they're already, they're already out of our district. We're not seeing them come back. But reduce the number of students who are leaving. That's why you see that reduction in total number of cost. But basically, if you reduce, you know, lease a student in kindergarten, you lose them for 13 years if they'd ever come back. And so that cost obviously continues. This year, we only actually, I went and looked through our numbers. The vast majority of students have already left the district. Two years ago, we had 400 students who were new that had left. Last year, that number was greatly reduced. And this year, we've only reduced, we released 44 students. So the number has really declined in terms of total number of new students that we're releasing. But still, as of right now, we have close to 1,000 who are currently outside of our school district. The last piece is we're going to be updating is our administrative regulations, our AR 5117. Last year, the board adopted a new board policy around this, but we did not adapt the administrative regulations that go with it. These administrative regulations that we're going to be putting in place hopefully tonight would not only correspond with the new district policy, but it also includes some language around district of choice. Recently, we've had a couple of schools in our neighboring areas who become district of choice programs. A district of choice is a state-run program. It's pretty rare. There's only a handful of schools that use it across the state. I think it's like 30, maybe 40 school districts in the entire state are districts of choice. And when a school becomes, or district becomes a district of choice, we as a home district cannot stop a student from leaving if they go through the district of choice kind of window. It's a very narrow window when they need to apply. They have to apply kind of in this winter time and apply before December 31. But if they apply under the district of choice, I, as the representative of the school district, can't decline any of those transfers. The only real restrictions that are placed on them are percentages. And that's one of the things that this AR 5117 policy would put in place. District of choice, we are allowed to cap at 3% every year and no more than 10% over the four-year course of the application. This is something that we're continuing to kind of look at. And it's going to have to be some negotiating. We're working with the other district to make sure we're getting that information. Because unlike in a current system where they apply to me and then I sign off on it and then it leaves, through the district of choice, they actually can go directly to the district they want to go to. And they don't really have to inform us directly. So it is making sure that that districts, the districts who are applying for district of choice are giving us back that information about which students they're taking from us. Currently, right now, East Nicholas is a district of choice. They've been like that for a while now. And Wheatland High School District has applied to become a district of choice for the upcoming school year. So those are the pieces that the AR 5117 policy address. Does any member of the board have any questions or concerns that I can address at this time?
Just a clarifying question. Could you repeat again how many students received approved permits this year to leave the district?
Forty-four.
Forty-four?
Yeah.
So I wanted to mention to the board, if you remember last February, one of the tasks I was given by the board was to identify areas for fiscal solvency for the district. And the question that I asked automatically is what is, and I had no idea that that was an issue for us. And my question had asked, and I had brought the presentation to you, Ms. Jolie Critchfield, our previous director, did that very detailed presentation last February. And we showed you this exact figure that you saw, which is a $48 million loss in the course of the lifetime of the number of students that have already received their permit. And the reason I'm repeating this again is because 1,000 children who are already gone, we can't get them back. But what I do want to appreciate and the work of our staff and, and let you know, which is important, is the work that Jolie's office and now Zach has been doing is stopping that open, I don't know what you want to call it, but the door where kids were just leaving our district. We brought it down from 400 the previous year to 44 this year, which was a commitment we made to the board. So fiscally, thank you, Zach, for all your work. And of course, Jolie prior to you. But thank you for bringing us AR 5117, which is asking the board to approve this AR. ARs don't usually come to the board, but this one is asking for a cap. So we do need the board to give us your approval on this one. Any questions? We'll take those.
Questions from the board?
I do have a question. It's just a clarification. Could you reverse back to the slide where, and it's just so that I understand context, reverse back to the slide right there. You mentioned that Yuba City basically nets, we trade basically the same number of students. Of that chart, we lend Plumus Lake and both high school and, we lend both high school and the school district. Do we trade back any of their students at all? Or is that...
I mean, I'm not saying there's zero, but it's very, very minuscule. So we, those other districts we tend to send students to, we don't get very, we don't get a lot of like kids from East Nicholas. They're just, I think partly it's just the commute patterns. We don't have a lot of families that are commuting from East Nicholas this direction. We have a lot more that are going towards Sacramento. So they go through some of those areas in the south part of our county. So we, but very, very few, a handful at most, maybe a dozen.
So the, just so that I understand, since I wasn't here before, so that $48 million does account for trading back and forth between Yuba City, University of...
No, this is just accounting for the 900 kids who have left. It doesn't count the students we do bring in. We do have some students that we do bring in. So that could, and I'm happy to give you those exact numbers of how many we bring back in. It would cut that number down, but the overall net loss would still probably be in the 900 range.
Okay. So that $48 million is basically the top ceiling number that, of loss revenue.
Yeah. The goal of that number was to show those are students that technically belong to us who are leaving versus students who are requesting to come into our district for other reasons.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Demography report, I don't know if you two have seen that, does track where our students are coming from. So we need to get you a copy of, of that report. And that'll help give you the fuller picture of the, the comings and goings. And, and there is a trade, but not, not enough to offset that, that huge number we're losing. Any other questions?
Yeah, more of an observation than anything. I think at the end of the day, we're a business and we're losing our customers. But on the other hand, I, I'm all about freedom of choice and giving parents the choice to choose the district they want to go. I see this as, for lack of a better word, a Band-Aid. What I'm really seeing, what I'm really looking at is there's a problem here. It's their choice. Why are they choosing to leave? And I'm willing to bet, dollars to donuts, our schools are already impacted. They're overloaded. We're the, if, if we do this and we still keep these kids from leaving, that's going to even overflow us even further. So now we have an infrastructure problem. Just thinking ahead.
And I don't know if that was a question. I think there was a suggestion in there somewhere and a dart thrown at me. But it is true. We have been discussing the need for the district to build new facilities, whether it be new schools or whether it be addition like Overlord with new wings to house more children. One of the reasons we see such a huge, huge exodus from the, to the Wheatland Elementary School District and Plumus Lake, you could very well understand that that's, a majority of them are Edgewater children. Parents bought homes in the Edgewater community, thinking that Edgewater was a home of choice. By the way the district boundary has been done, a big significant part of the Edgewater community feeds into Johnson Park. And so the parents don't even come to us. They just go straight to Wheatland, L, and wherever. And they're going from a very early age, like kindergarten. And so we do know we need that. So I will bring back, we have discussed as a board about a bond, that there possibly should be some conversation. So I would like the board at the next board meeting to give me formal direction to start working on it. I think to your point, Mr. Kittle, we, we need to find a way to build more modern, more schools with more facilities and infrastructure so that the families that are buying new homes here are attracted to the facilities that we have to offer. And I think that's definitely a, a big, one of the big reasons. We have very aged infrastructure.
Yeah. I, because we have the good programs. We're, it's a work in progress kind of a thing. But I, I see this as more of an infrastructure issue of where are we going to put these kids? And yeah, we're, we're already busting at the seams. But going back to my first analogy, at the end of the day, we're a business. That makes good business sense because we're losing customers. Bottom line.
Any other comments or questions from the board? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Allison Hasty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Next, we have 19.2, approve the contract with Rockeye Consulting LLC for a district-wide safety vulnerability assessment. Do we have staff?
Yes, I can speak to that. So went out and reached out to four different consulting firms to do a vulnerability assessment. This is a physical vulnerability safety assessment on each of our campuses. We have done those ourselves with local law enforcement. But we wanted to, especially with things that have happened this year, make sure that we were really taking a look and seeing everything that, that we need to be aware of. I do believe that you have a hard copy in front of you. There is just one change on that hard copy, and that is on the list of schools. We have a whole bunch of schools with Lynn Hurst in the name. And unfortunately, I missed that Lynn Hurst itself was not. So the terms and everything are exactly the same as it was posted. The only change there is that it lists Lynn Hurst as well. But this will be a physical, they will be onsite at every one of our campuses doing a full, and they specialize in this is what they do, former law enforcement, special forces, those types of people, to come in and do a full district-wide vulnerability assessment for us.
Well, I know we've had a lot of concern from the community about the safety of our campuses. And I know we have put in some, some measures that, for the immediate, but there is a long-term need for, and since I've been on the board, this has never been done. So it's very, very timely that we get on this. And so we don't waste money. I mean, this stuff is not cheap. And, and working with technology, that stuff is not inexpensive. And it requires that whole technology group to move with it. And that, and then that goes back to a related discussion about the aging of some of our equipment. And some of the campuses are having to deal with that. So I, I, I think it's absolutely imperative that we do that. Are there any comments or questions for...
Just a quick question. I'm not sure if you can answer this or not, but looking at the, the price tag of this, I'm trying not to because the safety of our kids, you can't put a price tag on that. But I'm looking at the term of the contract. This looks like 14 months. Why so long for a vulnerable, vulnerable, a study?
Vulnerable. They're not going to take a full 14 months to take a look at the campuses. A lot of that's going to be providing the information to us and helping work with us to come up with a plan on how to actually deal with some of the issues that are identified. And that's where part of that, that, that time is going to come from. And when you, you speak about the, the dollar amount, like I said, I reached out to four different consulting firms. I only got proposals back from two. This particular one was more than $40,000 less than the other one that we got. So it was, it was, and, and this is, this is a particular firm that, that many other districts in the area and in the state have used for this exact purpose. And so they, they come very well respected.
Would, do you think there would be possibly intermediate or interim recommendations that we might be able to take up?
Absolutely.
As it moves forward?
Yes, absolutely. Part of this will be to identify the, as what, you know, is often referred to as low-hanging fruit that we can. But some of these, some of the things that we're expecting to get from this are going to be much longer term, things that we really have to plan and prepare for. And, and so that's the expectation.
Are there any other comments or questions for technology? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Gary Kittle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Now we're at 28.1, Williams Act update for fiscal year 2022-23, presented by Yuba County Office of Education.
I'm actually here tonight to present on behalf of Yuba County Office of Education. Good evening. I am Amy Stratton, Director of Curriculum Assessment and Accountability. Welcome, new board members. So every year, California Ed Code 1420 requires that the superintendent of schools or his designated to visit schools in Yuba County and report results of the visits to the board at a regularly scheduled board meeting. The annual report for fiscal year 2022-23 is required by Ed Code Section 140, 1240, Section C2A, I, pursuant of Williams settlement. So basically, we have one school in our district that requires a Williams visit, and that's Cedar Lane. And they get visited and evaluated on, is there enough materials for the students? And if the conditions of the school are in good repair. And Yuba County Office of Education has determined that all of our students had adequate, all of our students had curriculum, everything that they needed, as well as our facilities were in good repair. And that is the report that will go to the state of California.
Are there any questions for you?
I do have one question in regards to providing context for me. I, I do have one question in regards to providing contacts for me. Um, since I don't know, I'm new, could you explain to me why Cedar Lane is, uh, has?
A Williams site?
Yeah.
Yeah, so when the state of California was sued over conditions of schools and the fact that many of our schools, many of our children in the lowest of incomes actually did not have enough, like, things, like textbooks, they had like a classroom set and they weren't allowed to take them home. And so there wasn't a lawsuit on, on, against the school districts, which resulted, it was called the Williams Act, which resulted in the lowest decile schools have a mandatory requirement of being visited and to us, to check, to make sure that all kids have curriculum in the core subjects, and that the sites are in good repair. And so, a certain percentage of the schools across the state of California are required to have these visits, and that list of schools are presented and decided by the state of California.
So just so that I understand, it has nothing to do with, uh, MJUSD?
No, it, it has to do with the performance of the schools, socioeconomic status, their EL numbers, their, um, state test scores. There's a formula to it.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
So a follow-up question on that, Amy, would be, there's no way that Cedar Lane is gonna get off this Williams site list?
They will when their scores are to, at, at a point in which they are no longer low-performing.
Thank you.
We used to, last year, I think we had five or six schools, and the reevaluation happened, and we're down to one school. Yeah.
Thank you. Now we're at twenty-eight point two, complete the first read of the revised educator effectiveness block grant originally, originally adopted on December fourteen, twenty-twenty-one.
So, I brought the revised educator effectiveness grant to the board back in September, and it was asked, the board asked if I consult with MUDA to review it once again. And so I had a meeting with MUDA, it was a very productive meeting, and we talked about, and I listened to the concerns, and so we went through, and I went through and revised, and I kept some of the stuff that the district, um, saw a need to have in the grant, but I also kept quite a few of the items that MUDA has also needed to see in the grant, and we just, I just kinda worked on the figures. And so this is the first read, it takes two board mem, two meetings to approve it, so this is just the first read, the public input. So I'm just gonna review and look at the, what's in there to what I am, what I'm proposing. So currently, we had, uh, we have instructional coaches at eight hundred thousand, and we are going to reduce that to six hundred seventy thousand dollars.
Uh, Jennifer, can we talk about, if you're watching, the, the, you can see it, but yes.
Okay, so the instructional coaching down to six hundred seventy thousand. And again, I, let me back up a little. This grant is good through the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, um, and we have, the entire grant amount is two million, three hundred, three thousand, roughly. So over, from between now and the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, reduce the instructional coaching by a little bit. I did remove the subs for training, we could provide all sub costs through Title II for professional development. Uh, we removed the, um, reading intervention strategies, we're gonna use our instructional coaching for that, as well as Title II. Uh, the UDL or RTI strategies, we're gonna keep that in there, we are gonna reduce it to sixty-five thousand, we again have Title II programs. Just a quick reminder, I'm gonna, should've inserted this ahead of time, when we're using our title programs, our title programs are the most restricted budget. Once we start using other funding sources for those title programs, we're no longer allowed to put those funding sources back into the title programs. So we have to be careful. I could pay for, like, the UDL training, um, out of the, out of the grant, but I also need to pay for part of it out of the title programs. I need to keep it still in the title programs. So, we offset it by using our Title II program. Our PBL training, and we're also gonna set these up as trainer mo, um, training or trainer model, which means we're gonna have a cadre of teachers that are going to receive intensive training, and they're, they're, those are gonna be the teachers that train our teachers. So again, that will help reduce some of the costs by bringing in trainers. We will use our staff for that. The AVID, again, um, we could have other funding sources, we can make up the costs over the course of the next several years. Um, our paraprofessional training for sped, for special education, the special education department has funding sources for that. Uh, trauma-informed restorative practices, again, we'll do the trainer, the training model through our SEL programs. Um, our GLAD training, we provide that by Title III, which is our EL funds, we've already done the GLAD training this year, and we paid for it through Title III. Um, provide training for our EL, um, classroom paras, which, again, we could do those during the school day and provide it with our coordinator, VLD, and our administrative internship program we did remove. We are adding the T-SIP program, as well as the teacher pathways, which is our mentorship program, and there is our grant amount. And so we're just asking the board to approve the reallocation of these funds. Okay, and this is just the first read, there's no action tonight. Any questions?
Any questions for Amy? Angela, is this the program you were mentioning in your comments?
Yes, Mr. Davis, it is.
And what was your concern here?
There are a few of them, um, one being the fact that just on this last slide, the T-SIP of six hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, um, that will provide, um, payment for the T-SIP program for about thirty of our teachers, I think it's thirty, thirty-six, somewhere in that ballpark, out of five hundred and eight teachers, and T-SIP has been taken from LCAP, um, and so I'm not quite sure why T-SIP would be coming out of the educator effectiveness grant at this point. Um, and at that point in time, I mean, you're looking at about thirty percent of the grant going for T-SIP just in and of itself. Um, six hundred and twenty thousand that you see here for the teacher pathways, um, MUDA worked with, um, Dr. Simon on a grant for that as well, and there, again, you're looking at maybe somewhere in the ballpark of twenty-five teachers or so, um, and that's another twenty-six, twenty-seven percent of the grant. And then when you look at the instructional coaching, um, although I appreciate the effort at, and the thought of providing instructional coaches, um, for instance, one ELA coach, um, for five hundred and eight teachers in the district, um, is not particularly helpful, um, especially in contrast to the fact that we wanted somewhere in the ballpark of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, to train the vast majority of our teachers in reading intervention strategies. Um, we had two literacy coaches here last year, um, that we didn't even manage to get all of our elementary folks, um, the reading strategy and literacy information and training that they wanted. And so certainly having one ELA coach is not going to be enough. Um, part of, the other thing that I had discussed with the district representatives is the fact that when we originally sat down and looked at this, um, MUDA did have some questions about spending such a large portion, there again, about twenty-nine, thirty percent of the grant on the salaries for three individuals, although they are our unit members, um, but spending thirty percent of this grant on the salaries for three individuals, um, over three years, we had some questions about, and at the time, kind of the give and take and compromise between, um, MUDA and the district at that point, was that we were able to keep the four hundred thousand dollars in subs for trainings within this. Um, that has since now been removed, um, so that presents another issue. And I understand, and I hear full well, the district telling me that they can use Title II monies for that. I've heard that for twenty-six years. And then right after that, I also hear that, but, the district doesn't have any money to provide subs for you to have, you know, training during your school day, and so, you can either do it after school or not at all. And so, that's where some of the issues lie. Um, yeah, the district can use a lot of different funding sources for certain things, but then they choose not to, especially once something like this has been approved. And so, like I said, it just brings up a lot of questions, and I have also said that I do appreciate the fact that originally, you know, we had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for both UDL and project-based learning, and then when this came up in October, there was zero for both of those, since sixty-five thousand dollars for each has been put back in. Um, I'm not exactly sure, um, exactly what real training could be provided to my teachers on UDL and project-based learning, um, to the tune of sixty-five thousand dollars for each of those over three years. Um, even doing a trainer of trainer models, which is exactly what we want, Amy's exactly right, we had that whole conversation, I had that conversation with, um, Jay as well. Um, so again, I appreciate the fact that that input is being taken and that is being listened to, but I think also that the district would admittedly have to say that sixty-five thousand dollars for each of those over three years, um, is, is going to be difficult at best. Um, so those are just some of the issues.
Well, one of the things that at least I would ask the superintendent with your staff to take a hard look at these issues, you know, it, it is to help the teachers, and, and, uh, certainly, it sounds like we could do better. And, and, um, with these, these grant dollars, which, anyway, I would just ask the superintendent to review this with this input.
I do also mention, I do also want to mention that as the conversation continues to happen between the MUDA group and our district team, um, the priority of the teachers are always going to be in the forefront. We may not always agree on everything, but the grant approval doesn't mean this is written in stone, and I want to be very clear that we understand, the board approves the plan, but the plan can shift a little bit here and there. So, this is just to make sure that we are making a thoughtful decision, decision on how the money is going to be used. Um, and also, I think, um, uh, you'd be pleasantly surprised when Mr. Traheem and his team bring forward the coaching plan, and it's not about hiring people anymore, it's about hiring site-based instructional leaders for additional assignments. I don't want to put the, too much out there, because I know that conversation is happening with you, so that will come to you, so you'll see that money is actually going to go to our teachers, not to three positions. So I, I believe that is input I was given, am I correct in that? Yeah? Yes? Okay, all right, so that's, that's just information today.
Are there any other questions?
President Davis, can I, can I make, can I, um, get a clarification procedurally? So, so the agenda item was noted that it was to request the board to complete a first read, and so, uh, but the request was to actually approve the budget, right? Is that correct?
This is the first read, the request to approve the budget will be at the next board meeting.
Okay, okay, I just wanna make sure, so we're not gonna motion to approve it, just to?
No, this is just a presentation.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're at twenty-one point one, minimum wage increase and impact classification, classified employees. Dr. Simon?
Yeah, so this is, um, we've gotta go back. This is the, um, impact of the state requirement to increase the minimum wage to fifteen dollars and fifty cents effective January one, twenty-twenty-three. It only impacts one of our unrepresented groups and salary schedules, so we've made a one percent adjustment to every range, every cell of that salary schedule to fall within the state requirement. That's the only salary schedule we need, um, to change, as all the other schedules are compliant.
Are there any questions for Dr. Simon? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Frank Crawford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Yang. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven oh. Now we're at twenty-one point two, approve the side letter of agreement between MJUSD and OE three, reclassification of bus drivers.
Yeah, thank you. After productive negotiations with Operating Engineers Three, which represent the majority of our classified staff, um, we do, uh, understand that busing is an essential service, and we do need to attract more bus drivers, um, and we feel an increase will help us in, in being able to do that, as well as some other pipelines we're working with Adult Ed to, to work on for that, for that pipeline for drivers as well. Um, the, uh, the accompanying AB twelve hundred required state documents for the cost out, uh, was provided by Business Services as well.
Are there any questions for Dr. Simon? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Doug Kriddle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gary Kriddle? Oh, Frank, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven oh. Now we're at twenty-one point three, approve the side letter agreement between MJUSD and OE three incorporating outreach consultants into the clerical union.
Yes, outreach consultants were previously unrepresented, um, the, um, OE three petition to have them join their union, the majority of outreach consultants, um, by the required margin, um, agreed to do that. Um, it made the most sense to, um, place them on the existing ranges on the salary schedule versus compacting the entire schedule, which would have been a, a much larger, um, cost. So we placed them on existing range twenty-nine, which gives them a slight increase over their current compensation.
Are there any questions for the board? Are there any questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Doug Kriddle, is there a second?
My name's, uh, second, Chris. It's all right.
Gary Kriddle, seconded, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven oh. Now we're at twenty-one point four, approve the tentative agreement between MJUSD and CSEA number three twenty-six and corresponding job description.
Yes, thank you. This is, um, the chapter of CSEA that represents our paraeducators and those classifications. And we have a need in our, um, district to deline, further delineate the duties of the child development bilingual special education and personal aid paraeducators. Uh, we have some unique student needs in regards to, to self-help skills, toileting, et cetera, though all those job descriptions have been updated. Uh, one is a new one, child development paraeducators. We have a salary that we feel represents those duties, and we now are in line with other districts that offer increased compensation for more intense paraeducator positions. So this is a great move for our district to be competitive in hiring these folks.
The question I have is, how does this work with our budget? Is this, are we staying within what we know of our budget?
Yeah, so we did consult Business Services and looked at the short and long-term, um, cost out of this, um, increase, it is well within the budget. It's considered a reclassification, so it doesn't involve any additional compensation to other groups. Um, we definitely increase the responsibilities of these paraeducators and feel that, um, now that those duties are well documented, um, the increase, um, not only makes us competitive, but, uh, represents or aligns with what we're asking them to do.
Are there any questions, Dr. Simon? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Allison Hasty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gary Kriddle, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven oh. Now we're at twenty-two point one, resolution twenty-two, twenty-three slash seventeen to amend the four oh three B retirement plan with Omni Health.
Thank you. Our Omni Financial Group is our third-party, uh, advisor for our four oh three B program, and this year they've amended their plan detail, and it requires a board resolution, and the, and staff asks that you approve.
Are there any questions for Jennifer? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Frank Crawford, is there a second? Second by Allison Hasty, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven oh. Now we're at twenty-two point two, approve the resolution twenty-two, twenty-three slash eighteen, authorizing twenty-two urban community drought relief grant program application, acceptance, and execution for the replacement of athletic fields district-wide.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, new board Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, new board members, Dr. Azroni and Cabinet. I'm up here to give you a little background on this grant, and our goal is to improve our athletic terrars first for our high schools and intermediate schools, and then look at the other fields that we have around the district that are in need of improvement for irrigation and turf. This grant is for a minimum of $3 million, and it does not include artificial turf.
Are there any questions for Doug?
The money will not pay for artificial turf?
Will not.
So what is it going to be, real grass?
Yeah, it'll be a native drought-resistant turf, real grass, or plants.
Fascinating. You're going to like it. Wouldn't like it.
I know that's, is that similar to what we have at Lynn Hurst?
Correct.
If any of you have been out there, it's incredible.
I would.
Yeah. Are there any questions for Doug? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford, is there a second? Second by Allison Hasty, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 7-0. Thank you, Doug. Now we have 22.3, approve the agreement with PBK Architects for foothill intermediate school modernization. And there is a correction in the proposal, it really is just a typo. Jennifer?
Sure, it's a correction in the agenda background. The proposal and the agreement attached are correct, but the correction is the second sentence in the background agenda item. The traditional OPSC fee schedule for modernization calculates this budget for a fee rate of 10.64%. And then it goes on to read that PBK is offering a reduced fee rate of 8%. And so...
So it is a savings?
Yes.
Are there any questions for either Doug or Jennifer? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Doug Cridle, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Frank Crawford, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes. Now we're at 22.4, proposed proposal with Lloyd Sports and Engineering for the Marysville High School Track Project. Doug?
Um...
Jennifer?
You sure?
Sorry about that. So this item is to approve the agreement with the architects that we chose. We interviewed and we ranked three architectural firms, and Lloyd Engineering was our pick, and this is the agreement to, for them to design the track, and we asked the board to approve the agreement.
Do we have a timeline?
We do have a timeline. Once this contract is approved, design phase starts, and that runs from about January to April. It'll get submitted to DSA. That's usually about a 12 to 14-week process, and we're hoping to start the project. It'll have to go out to bid, but we're hoping mid to late summer, and it's a nine to 12-month construction process.
So do we think we would get it finished for the new school year or not?
It, no, not in time for the school year, but hopefully for the end of the school year of the 23-24. Yes.
Are there any questions?
So what are the students going to be using if they don't have their track available?
We'll have to work that out with the school and come up with some other arrangements.
Options?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Are there any other questions for either Jennifer or Doug?
Yeah, is this solely for retrofitting the track in addition to the field, or...
So, yeah, no, this will be the track and field upgraded, including lights as well.
Doug, does that have bleachers? Was there bleachers still involved in that?
There's minimum bleachers, yeah.
Okay. And how about pathway access for outside, or...
That'll all be included, ADA, those would be ADA requirements.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to add that once the design is completed, and it'll go to DSA, and DSA is the Department of State Architecture, and they oversee any facility project with any school districts, and so they will ensure that we have ADA compliance, path of travel, and everything that is required for safe facility environment for our students.
Any other questions?
So before we get phone calls from angry parents, I just want to point out on the very bottom, the Agreement for Architectural Service for the Lynn Hurst High School Project is next. Is PBK also going to be doing this one?
Thank you, Mr. Cridle, yes. No, this is Lloyd Sports and Engineering, not PBK. And yes, they are excited to help us out with the Lynn Hurst, and that will come in January. We just had our community meeting with Lynn Hurst last week, and it was great. We had a good turnout with our students, staff, parents, and community members. So we got feedback, just like we did with the Marysville community, and so we will bring that to you in January.
Okay. I know they're two completely different sites, but can we kind of expect to have the same infrastructure and relatively cost to be about the same between the two schools?
Well, they're completely two different facilities, and so we are going to scope this out, and then we'll come back with the agreement and then start that design phase. And that will include input from community members, students, and staff also during the design phase, because they have a football field in there also, and they have bleachers and other, they have other items that they need, different from the Marysville High School Track.
Do you think that the price would end up being more? This is just speculation.
I have no idea, but we have budgeted $5 million for each. Is that correct, Dr. Azroni? So, yes.
I just want to be clear on making sure that both schools get exactly what they need, and it's not a contest of dollars, per se. It's, we're giving them what they need and what their site can handle.
Absolutely, we want it to be equitable.
Just a clarification, need is here, want is here, so we just need to be very realistic about what we can do, and so, but we will not compromise one site over the other. I think that's a statement.
Right.
Yeah, so the goal will be to provide all the necessities for them to operate both tracks. If we need to do some type of value engineering or next phase process on that, we'll look into that.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford.
Second.
Second, Allison Hasty, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 7-0. Thank you. Now we have the last item on the agenda, approve the 2022-23 First Interim Financial Report. Jennifer?
Good evening, thank you. You'll see my presentation here in just a moment, but I just, as a reminder, want to emphasize that it is an overview of the big packet that was included loosely in your board packet for our first interim financial report. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Azroni, Cabinet, and MJUSD community. Tonight, I will present the 2022-23 First Interim Budget. This budget update provides a picture of the district's financial condition from July 1 through October 31, and projects financial activity through June 30, 2022. In this presentation, I will go over the budget cycle, give a budget update on our unrestricted and restricted general funds, along with an update of our COVID relief funds and one-time block grants, general fund summary, multi-year projections, and next steps. This is a diagram of our LCAP budget cycle. We are constantly working in a three-year cycle. It begins in July with the adopted budget of the 22-23 fiscal year. In September, we have closed our books for the 21-22 fiscal year and bring to you our inaudited actuals. Here we are now in December with the 22-23 First Interim Financial Update. In January, we will hear from the governor on his 23-24 fiscal year budget proposal, and then in March, we'll come back with the 22-23 Second Interim Financial Report. And then April through May, we'll begin working on our preliminary LCAP and budget. In May, the governor will come out with his revised, to his budget proposal, for the 23-24 fiscal year, and then in June, we'll present to you the proposed adopted budget and LCAP for your approval for the 23-24 fiscal year. I'll begin with an overview of changes from adopted budget to the first interim of our unrestricted general fund. The unrestricted general fund is for the general operation of the school district. First interim compared to adopted budget reflects an increase of revenue of $6.4 million. $6.2 million of the increase is due to the COLA of 6.7% that increased from the enacted state budget. We also had a slight increase in local revenue due to a CalSTRS excess calculation and interest The net increase of unrestricted general fund expenditures is $1.4 million. The $1.4 million net increase to expenditures is due to unrestricted site discretionary carryover, the alignment of salary and benefits, 21-22 negotiated salary increase for the CSEA bargaining units, an increase to routine restricted maintenance to meet the required 3% maintenance of effort, realignment of the indirect costs from restricted programs. This next section will compare the restricted side of the general fund from first interim to adopted budget. Restricted funds come from other state revenue and federal revenue and are available for use only within the program and purposes for which they are granted. The restricted general fund revenue has increased by $74.5 million since the adopted Of the $74.5 million increase, federal revenue increased by $42.7 million due to 21-22 carryover. These funds include COVID relief, our SRR2, SRR3, and ELO grants, and other federal funds such as our title funding. We also had an increase in our other state revenue of $30.8 million for our Learning Recovery Emergency Grant and Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, and then we also had 21-22 carryover for our programs such as inclusive early education, C-TIG, special education, K-12 Strong Workforce, and we had a slight increase in local revenue for our Medicare billing of a half a million dollars. Restricted general fund expenditures increased by $32 million. This $32 million increase is due to the 21-22 carryover budgeted for expenditures that include salary and benefits, for extra duty for both certificated and classified employees, materials and supplies, services and other operating expenses for programs such as expanded learning, opportunities program, title funds, and COVID relief funds. $11.6 million is allocated to the COVLOD 16 classroom building from our SRR2, and we had a transfer of outgo to our MCAA of their SRR funds and title funds. This is an overview of the remaining COVID relief funds. The SRR2 funds must be spent by June 2023. The SRR3 and ELO grants have a spending deadline of June 2024. The following slide summarizes the expenditures allocated to the COVID relief funds. This recap of COVID relief expenditures is summarized by funding source, SRR2 COVLOD Classroom Building, SRR3 has been allocated for increased learning support, and the Foothill Modernization Project, and the ELO Grants for learning support. A deeper dive into the COVID relief funds reflects positions that have been added to increase support to our students and staff. Additional one-time funding sources that have occurred since the adopted budget are the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant and the Arts, Music, and Instructional Discretionary Block Grant. The Learning Recovery Grant of $15.8 million has a spending deadline of September 30, 2028. Although a spending plan is not required, a reporting of expenditures is, and spending is restricted to allowable uses such as pupil supports, instruction for credit deficit students, increase or stabilize instruction learning time, and closing gaps. The Art and Music Discretionary Grant does require a plan and has a spending deadline of June 30, 2026. The allowable uses for this grant are standards-aligned professional development and instructional materials, diverse book collections, operational costs, and pandemic-related supplies. Next is a summary of the total general fund. This summary reflects unrestricted, restricted, and combined totals for the general fund. The total revenues minus the expenditures less other uses equals a net increase to the fund balance of $31.9 million. This added to the beginning balance of $60.6 million totals a $92.5 million ending fund balance. The components of this $92.5 million ending fund balance are revolving cash and estimated ending inventory, $654,000, restricted use, $57.9 million, committed for our facilities and technology, $11 million, assignments, $17.3 million, economic uncertainty, $5.7 million, for a total fund balance of $92.5 million. Multi-year projections included, include the first, current first, multi-year projections include the current fiscal year budget and budget projections for the two subsequent years. This is a planning tool that considers current and projected planning factors. This multi-year projection is a summary of the unrestricted general fund. You can find more detail on the multi-year in your first interim budget packet. This is a table of the planning factors considered when projecting this current year budget and our out-years. We use the Department of Finance statutory COLA, along with any local control funding COLA, projected STIRS and PERS employer rates, and universal transitional kindergarten ADA. We also use a 2% step-in column increase for our, each year, for our added salary and Coming up next will be our LCAP and budget meetings. In January, we'll be back, we'll hear what the governor budget proposal has to say for the 23-24 fiscal year. Capital Advisors will be here in February to give us an update, and in March, we'll present to you the 22-23 Second Interim Financial Reports. I would like to give a huge thank you to Cindy Helms, the Director of Fiscal, and her entire team for all their hard work preparing our financials, and I'd also like to thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Jennifer. That's a lot of rows and columns. The, have we heard any update? I know we, you know, when we were at CSBA, the number was 28 billion, billion in shortfall for the state. Have they updated that number?
They have. I believe it's around 42 billion, 48, and, but they, we just received a message from Capital Advisors, I think today or yesterday, and I apologize, I don't have all that information in front of me, but yes, they have updated that number. Yes.
So do we, have you heard any strategies for how they're going to cover that with the new year funding?
With, for next year, for the 23-24 year? I believe what I'm hearing is that we're okay for the next year, we have enough in reserves, the California state does. It'll be those out-years that they'll have, we'll have to start looking at how they're going to adjust for that. Education money is protected by Prop 98, and so we'll have to wait and see what the governor comes out with in January.
Are there any other questions from the board or comments?
I'm just asking a series of stupid questions all night because I'm the new guy. The, I just want to understand what does it mean in the recommended action when it says positive certification?
Okay.
Even though we're actually showing deficit spending, right?
Yes, well, we're, yes, it does show we're deficit spending, but by a positive certification, we're certifying that we do have enough in our reserves to cover those expenditures in the, in the two out-years from the current year.
Are there any other questions? Motion approved. Frank Crawford has made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Doug Cridle, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 7-0. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
We have no public comments that came in on time, and therefore the meeting is adjourned.
Ubisutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor... providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in person and personalized, instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings, strings for instruments and a myriad of music and sound equipment. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe.